Oh, I see you took the chair with two... I say, okay. I see how you roll. Okay, sir, thank you.
You're perfectly naked with a nameplate.
I know. I'm not.
This is not yours, this is Liz's.
Don't go down there. Don't go down there, sport.
Sorry, but you said you feel naked, right?
Without a nameplate.
Oh, yeah, nameplates, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we are.
I know.
I know.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome to all, Rich, excuse me, to the Village of New Paltz Planning Board Meeting for Tuesday, June 3, 2014, at 7:05. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. My name is Maurice Whiteman, I'm the chair. All the members present this evening are John Litten, Michael Zirler, and Rich Stephens. Liz Harshel is probably going to be absent this evening. Our attorney is George Rodenhause, our secretary is Brogan Rose... Can I keep doing that? Okay, thank you. And we have our director of planning, Brenda White, and our village board liaison, Thomas Rocco.
It's always a pleasure.
It's my pleasure, indeed. We have an agenda consisting of a site plan for a new project on 51 Main Street, which will be new buildings and site improvements for a mixed-use restaurant and apartment building. That's PB 1403. For that same project, we have a ZBA referral for some variances, area variances that they are applying for. And we have some other administrative business that we will attend to after those things are dealt with. So. I see Mr... Do you pronounce it Viglus?
Yes.
It's just that simple.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Viglus is here. And Mr. Miller, the esteemed architect. Would you pull up chairs and join us up here? So, when we last were together... Okay. So, when we last left your application, we asked you some questions about parking. And I do remember that we wanted to find out how many seats you had. And I think we have that nailed down, even though it wasn't on the drawing that we had. Has that been changed?
Hasn't been changed. It's on as well, yes. You mean on this draw?
Yes.
I believe it is on there. If not, then it was my error. But I do, I still have the plans showing seats, which we understand. And I did upgrade the area, not to discount what was previously approved, just to talk about what is there and what is new.
Good.
Fine-tune that. But I have a feeling it has to put the seats... It's 100 seats for the record.
100 seats.
Yeah, there were 32 first floor, 68 second floor, and that includes 12 on the deck.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so. We asked about, we asked for some parking information. And you, so we got the parking study from, what year was that?
2006.
2006? And Rich, you did, you did your own little tour of the area.
Last, we, the night after the meeting, we went out and assessed spots with a tape measure to how far, what was 400 feet? So we had 300 foot measuring, 100 foot. So, and then we went on Google. And it came out very similar, using, so I have 10 copies of this, which I emailed you guys. But that is, this shows the radius. Actually been measured and then laid over at Google's site. And it also shows, can you make sure you, Ben went out and did 10 days, three times a day? 7, what is it, 7:00 PM?
1:00, 7:00.
1:00, 7:00 and 10:00.
Yeah. So we found my notes. We were looking for, I think it was 35 spaces, is that right?
30.
Yes. Yes, 35, because we had two.
35, or, yeah, okay. There's 37 total, and you have two.
Right, no, wait. 200 seats, so 34 plus the two, 36.
36.
Side by side, 34.
Yeah.
34 spaces, yes.
May I interrupt for one moment, just to mention, there was, there was some confusion about whether our code was changed that dictates the number of spaces that are required for commercial use. And in April, I think it was April of 2013, Village Board passed a law that changed the wording of that code section to make the requirements listed in the schedule be guidelines that Planning Board will use. And so we don't have to say that it's gotta be a specific number. We can take into account shared use by time-shifted businesses and so on. So, we now believe that that law was passed and is in effect. And that we have the discretion to use those limits as guidelines for us to decide. So, please continue, I'm sorry.
I read through some of that receipt this afternoon. I sent it to the email out. It looked like they were also saying, from page 2 of the RSG memorandum, "The current status of public parking supply and demand is described below. An estimated 697, 697 public spaces are located in areas of 40 feet of the Village Gateway. B2, this public parking inventory is a mix of on-street spaces, 48, and off-street, 209, within municipal lots. An estimated 270 public parking spaces are metered. All metered, and there was a footnote to that, all metered and un-metered parking spaces located on-street and off-street within designated municipal parking lots are included in the inventory." So that, that, we had a question last time, whether metered was included.
In municipal parking lots, they are. On the street?
Okay.
I didn't think they were.
Oh, okay, within, that's a good point.
Well, to follow up on what the chair just said.
Yeah.
The law was changed, we're told it was enacted and filed. And that section was deleted from the law.
Okay.
The section that referred to the 400 feet municipal lots, you'd get credit for that, that was all taken out.
Okay, great, all right.
So we're now working with more, at more complete discretion of the Planning Board in light of what you found.
Okay, the filing I saw...
And may I just add to that, that we still need to know why we should say it's okay.
Okay, so we were gonna present information. They did say on page 3 of that, key finding from the foregone analysis is that outside of short periods of intense parking activity, there is adequate parking supply within a reasonable walking distance to Village Court. I think that's information, but it's not good for us.
Yeah, what, by year was that?
That was '06. N99, that was way before '06. So what we did here, you went around, you developed a plan, and went around three times a day for 10 days. So this, this chart shows the radius. It kind of highlights the lots. It does include parking on the street where there are meters. But again, that's, doesn't matter. So we only looked at metered or municipal parking spaces. And at no time in, within the times, did we not have enough spaces to comply with the 35, 34, 35. The least available was 37, I think, at one point. 7:00 PM, Sunday, 5:25, so that was Memorial Day weekend, which should have been high-volume.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, it appears, based on what we did, that the spaces are available to accommodate...
Could you just give me the page reference to the 2006 study?
It was page 2 and 3 of, like, the fourth item that you sent. It's called the Parking Policy and Administration, or RSG Project Memorandum. That's how it was called. Page 2 and 3.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any questions or comments about parking so far, what we know? Is there a master's?
No, it's a great study. And I, you know, I concur that I don't think we have a problem with parking downtown.
Mr. Litten?
No, but this is good.
George, you have any suggestions?
No.
All right, what else do we have? What other news do you have?
A couple things, the bike racks. I said the plan at about 6:30, I wouldn't have given it up, but I made up three copies. We, we probably got four, we could come back to request less, but I was looking at, this is a, I put out three copies, so if you guys want to share. Essentially, I'm just asking for your thoughts on this, but where the plan is, is on on 32, across from the gas station and the lockstep. There's a planner. There could be a, I show a bike rack option right there. We have about five foot, six foot on the site. So that could fit a couple bikes. It doesn't seem like a bad spot to me, like by the planner at the end of the site. Four municipal bike racks for a bike rack. The other option, or in addition, this plan is a little updated from last time. It shows the footprint of the building on the ground. The other previous plan wasn't as clear. So it shows that, you know, I showed this as solid before, but that's actually outdoor space. So I was thinking a bike rack could go under here, covered as well. That could be employees and, or whatever, students. So that's closer. This one at the end is the other one, which could be neat, but I'm looking for...
What's the requirement for the number of bikes?
I think it's four, because it's for this project.
Okay, that sounds great.
Okay, so the alternatives are in the back?
Or both.
Yeah. Or, I'm sorry, where's the other one?
Both in the back, one is undercover and one is right next to part of the, just at the edge of the municipal lot.
Yeah, kind of by that planner. And the sidewalk is here, so that could be convenient. And in fact, this owner could augment it with additional, which could be cool. I don't know what, but anyway.
Are these, what are the tanks?
The tanks are not fixed, but they're proposed to be propane tanks under the building. And I called Kimlin, and that's fine. They were previously outside with a gigantic concrete followed. So we're proposing, you know, screen them, make it look better. But they could be anywhere under there, so if that's what you're alluding to, yeah.
And the alleyway is here?
Yeah.
And this is the Japanese-Chinese restaurant, right?
Right.
And parking spaces that you have are back here?
Yes. So these are our two parking spots on the property? This is half on it? These all exist.
Right.
And these all exist, so we are, I mean, we could, we could claim our space and do this, but I think it's better to have a car parking. That would be silly.
And this covered spaces, there's no specific intended use for that?
No, I mean, the kitchen door is here, so if you're...
It's gotta be a loading area.
Yeah.
All right, so that sort of restricts where the tanks, to some extent, restricts where the tanks go.
Can you share a dumpster at the next door?
Yes, yeah, these guys, yeah. I don't think, we discussed last time, the front of the building didn't make sense, although if it does, to you, that's, you know, it's...
For the bike rack?
Yeah, the sidewalk is too narrow as it is. That would be dangerous and ugly.
Unless you could have some kind of elevator?
Okay.
Bungee carts?
Off the, off the canopy, up on top. An attendant.
Alley.
Yes.
Alley parking.
I mean, I like it a lot better out by the tree.
Yeah.
One, I think it's more visible, which is something you wanna give witness to downtown, see we have parking.
Yeah.
And two, I don't know if particularly you want people hanging around and propane tanks.
No.
Yeah, I wouldn't use that one for the public.
Maybe that could be employee?
I mean, if you wanted to provide bike parking for employees, that would be fine.
Okay, great. I was worried about whether...
I agree with Rich, but...
I mean, you have a gate coming down through already? Is that what this?
There is an existing gate there, that would, yes. But that's not, that's really, that would be the relocation, I mean, that's, it's not for public.
Do you intend to fence the long years, that's what I'm asking?
Yes.
So you're gonna fence these in anyway?
Yeah, yeah. So probably the parking out here makes a lot more sense. I was just kind of throwing out two options for you guys.
Yes.
I was worried that four may not fit, we may be on the adjacent property. But I bet he wouldn't mind. I mean, he can't use this for parking anyway, so we could fit the four.
And can you, you could talk to him about your neighborhood. Do a share on the, you know, because it would extend out his property.
Yeah, I'm sure he wouldn't mind.
It's like moving the pants, if they're here, it's on this side.
On, on your side of the fence?
Yeah, I mean, we could put it on.
Right, you could. It's just then if cars are there, it could scratch a car or something, just seems... I mean, right here seems pretty nice, walking on the sidewalk.
These are grayskin containers. Is that a dumpster?
It must be sitting on top of the restrooms.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so, seeing, I have, I thought I did one last time, I'm not sure. I know you have an email.
I have one, yes.
Yeah, okay, I have another seating plan that you guys need to reference, okay?
Okay, I don't think we need to reference it now. As long as, it has to be on the plan, so.
Yes.
When we submit the plan to county and...
Yeah, okay. I will, how many sets do we need tomorrow?
Can you do it for the county?
Yeah, showing this one, I'll show...
Well, for the county, but we need for...
Updated.
All of us, yes.
You want 10 sets, or? I will get the showing seats number. We don't need the seating plan, though, because...
Because what?
Oh, the county wouldn't need the seating.
Probably not, but you know, to be considered a good site plan, is it an actual requirement that the site plan contain the seating plan?
No.
So...
We had that issue with bars, but there's no bar here to be concerned about, I assume.
Okay.
So just to count seats.
Yeah, okay, seats are good. Okay. Any other comments about parking bike racks, propane tanks? Okay. Madam Director of Planning, Zoning, and Code Enforcement, and my friend had another... I printed up some business cards for a guy that worked for me, was Master of All Space, Time, Dimension. And then at one point I gave responsibility for the keys for the place, and we added "and" keys. So, could you, could you summarize your report to us for this, for this failing points? So we have something on video, audio record, and...
So, first I said that the B2 zone is appropriate for mixed use. And when it gets to the zoning board of appeals, the ZBA will have to consider the area variance. But most, there are no lots in this block, and very few in this area of Main Street that wouldn't require an area variance for mixed use. So perhaps those guidelines are a little off.
Yes. So we've heard.
I talked about the porous pavement, which I appreciated. That brings him down to less than 90% impervious surface, which is what we want. And certainly improves the stormwater, any stormwater issues that might happen in that area. Parking, we talked about. And well, the village clearly wants to encourage mixed uses. There are no parcels on this lot, and there are a few in the downtown area that are large enough to not require an area variance for such a use. The question from the Planning Board's point of view is, should be, is this an appropriate space for mixed use? I believe the answer is yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much, Director. Okay, so, the next step for this, assuming we deem the application to be complete, would be to refer this to the county Planning Board and schedule a public hearing. And the way that would work, the timing is such that the county Planning Board meets on the first Wednesday of the month. That'll be tomorrow. So they will meet again in July on the 2nd of July. Our meeting after that would be the 15th of July. So that would be the earliest date where we could have a public hearing, having heard from Lee County. I'll have one caveat in there, which is that it is possible that something will go wrong at the county. And it could be that they don't have a quorum, in which case it's deemed approved or something like that. The county has to have it for 30 days. After 30 days, we don't have to wait for them anymore. So, only if they find something materially wrong with it that said that they kick it back to us. I don't anticipate that. So for the most part, we can be certain that we will have a public hearing on the 15th. They have to be certain of that? How many days do they have to have the notice?
10 days.
10 days. So by July 5th, or maybe 4th is the thing, right? So July 5th, 4th is Friday, so it really doesn't make sense, because...
You can, you can schedule a public hearing, and then if, if don't have the answer from the county, you can continue.
We can open and continue, right?
Yeah. At least, then you can do the action tonight.
Okay. So are there any other questions of the applicant, or comments on the application from board members? Okay, may I have a motion to consider the application complete?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Zirler, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now may I have a motion to schedule a public hearing for our July 15th meeting? Thank you, Mr. Litten. Second, Mr. Stephens. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so Brogan will tell you what you have to do to notice this in the paper and in the neighborhood. And how do we do this again? Who tells us what, who the neighbors are?
I look it up on the Ulster County.
You look it up.
Okay, and then Brogan will be sending this to the county tomorrow?
Yes.
Yes.
30 days will actually ruin them.
No, 30 days, when, when they receive.
Oh, okay, so they have a chance to... Do you wanna also do recommendations to CBAs?
Yes, yeah, that'll be mine, that's the next on the agenda. Okay, so we're done with that part of your project for the agenda. The next item on the agenda is the area variance that you applied for to ZBA. And we head into the...
16th quarter.
I remember seeing it.
You don't have it, I haven't.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, just for kicks, Mr. Miller, would you tell us what you're asking for?
Yes, I updated the drawing to be clearer, and the building area notes, well, the lot coverage is 26, 2,614 square feet. We're required to have 2,500 and 5,000 for residential. I still, did we determine last time as a total of 75, or is it the higher of the two for mixed use? It would seem to me a higher of the two would be...
I'm sorry, I missed, I was looking at the agenda.
I'm sorry. We're required 5,000 foot minimum and 2,500 for the area. In my mind, I wouldn't add them up, I would just think of them more restricted.
But we added them up.
We added them up.
Brad added them, and I sort of, I...
Okay, so we're adding them up. So we have 2614, we're kind of 7,500. So that's a variance for that, as well as the square footage of the building they're gonna be looking at, which is 5,037 proposed for the restaurant. And the apartment is 1420, and then there's some outdoor deck areas. So we're talking 6, 6 and 650, you know, way up. So it's, in terms of the restaurant, which is now first floor and basement, it's about 100% increase for the rent, it's 102% increase for the apartment.
Forgetting about the increase, what do you, what is the...
The restaurant total is 5,037 square feet. And the apartment is 1420 plus 3,580 for the deck, and 54 for the deck, the other deck, so...
But that's not the variance issue. Is it? The variance issue is, you need a lot area variance of, to go from 2,614 feet up to the total of 7,500 feet.
Right.
So it's about a triple.
Yeah.
Three-fold deduction. George, is it triple? If he's already got a used proof under for 5,000, he's really just adding the residential use to it, right?
No, that, that doesn't stay with the lot. It's a new use, it's a new person, new entity, new, new use.
It's a new use.
The area variance disappears with the owner. So this, he has to get his own area variance for his, his new structure on the property. But as I read your application, which I almost done correctly, you need a variance from 7,500 required down to 2,614. You need to coverage variance, and I don't know what the, it was from what to what, but I think it's a 90% coverage limit, and you're more than 90%, I gather. Some of which is pay, is permeable paving.
Sorry.
Coverage. Yes, we're not, but we're proposing permeable paving, so we're at 85%. We're actually complying. In my opinion, once the fire limit district is outside jurisdiction of ZBA, so you really had two, two issues they can rule on. Right. And...
So I'm a little confused about the coverage. From what you said...
I think they're fine with coverage.
So they don't need a variance?
So you don't need a variance for coverage?
No, because they're under, because of that impervious, or pervious parking, it brings them under.
We'll take care of it, okay.
George, you are correct. In my initial proposal, I did request it.
Right, but now you...
It's just I pulled it out and did the parking.
So now you're not a one-area variance?
Yeah, um, yes. Except my concern is that with that increase in area, there's gonna be some sensitivity. Even though it's a very small lot, it's not really that much area, but they're looking at it as a threefold increase, so...
Who is that?
Ah, the ZBA.
Because of the apartment on top, it adds 5,000 square foot requirement. If you were to the apartment, you'd almost be in compliance, you would be.
Yeah, you would be, most.
2,500 versus 2,600. So putting the apartment on top is, is really the issue.
Okay.
But for the reasons that Brad, sorry, Brad gave, it makes sense, from a planning point of view, at least the planner said, to include the apartment in this mixed use.
Okay.
And that's all we can talk about here, ZBA will have their own rack to use.
Yeah. Okay. But a positive recommendation for you is what we're looking for?
Positive, that's always good. Okay, so, any... Okay, so any, any discussion or questions about that, about this variance, the area variance? Michael?
No, I would strongly urge us to approve it.
Mr. Litten? Okay. So may I have a motion to give a positive recommendation to ZBA for the area variance, which is for the additional 4886, is that the way we say it?
Is that the difference?
Well, 7,500 and 2614, that's what I can...
I would just say for the variance from 7,500 down to 2614.
Well, what he said.
Yes.
May I have a motion for...
Could you just say for the reasons set forth in Bren's memo and attach that to your...
I amend my motion to say for the reasons set forth in Director of Plan, yes, Bren's memo.
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
Mr. Zerler, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So that's that. Now, we were going to also... So there isn't anything we need to do for ZBA for now for that, right?
Correct.
We're done, okay. So we're done with everything there. There is one thing, you don't have to stay here, but you can stay for your own, for your own thing here.
So, but we, we haven't done seeker.
No, we have not.
And that issue comes up in the MOU, but
Yes.
if the ZBA, when does ZBA meet next?
Next week.
The 11th.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Are you a ZBA?
Yes.
Good to meet you. So this is the issue, they could have a hearing on this, but they could make a decision on the variance, but they can't, they can't make a decision on the variance until seeker is done.
Right.
So if we're going to be lead agency, we have to go through that process of doing the agency resolution, which they can defer to, and then you can do seeker next meeting. Or they can do their own seeker.
Katie, here's where we're at with this, and I'll just mention this generally. We've recently begun complying with our village, we have recently begun complying with the village code, which is that ZBA is supposed to refer to planning board for our recommendation before holding a public hearing. And for various reasons, including our wanting to streamline the process to make things quicker for the applicants
Yes.
and more understandable and predictable, we, I asked George to draft an MOU that would be between planning board and ZBA.
Okay.
And George, can you summarize this for Katie and others?
So on this, on this issue of seeker, it's an agreement between the two boards that on area variance, any variance issue that comes up, where both boards are involved agencies, in other words, there's some approval authority here, it's going to be site plan, planning board, site plans, special permit or subdivision, but there's also a variance involved, but there's both boards are involved agencies. The planning board will automatically be deemed the lead agency. Because ZBA is deemed to have consented to that, so we don't need to go through the 30-day exchange and delay everyone. I suppose you could always get out of that, you know, just pass a resolution, say, we abandoned this, but we've done it in other towns and it works pretty well. So that's the idea. For example, in this case, it would mean that this board could do a lead agency resolution and automatically reply to ZBA and cover the seeker issue. But we don't have that in place, so we have to go through a lead agency determination first.
And the other part of this is that we didn't want, we didn't want everything to come to us. We don't want to have to delay everything and have to approve variances for a shed, a deck, a fence, height, or setback variances, so...
Yeah.
Is that specifically excluded here, or do we just say just those things for site plan and...
Excluded, single-family and two-family area variances. So any area variance.
Single family and two-family.
Area variance.
They would not be referred to the planning board.
Okay.
So it could be any kind of area variance, it could be setback, it could be a fence height, anything that relates to a single-family residence or a two-family residence.
So are you going to send that to us, or...
Well, it hasn't been discussed yet.
We have to discuss it and pass it, and then we will give it to you, and you will do the same. Bren, you've seen this, right?
Yes.
Do you have any comments about this?
I don't know that I've actually seen the official and result of it, but I was involved in the conversation, and it seems...
Why don't you read it over?
Fine.
So to do seeker efficiently, you could do another resolution, just doing a lead agency, and ask Rogan to notify the ZBA as the only other involved agency that we like to lead agency. Then when the ZBA meets, they can say, yes, we defer, and then the next meeting you can do it. Do their significant determination.
Okay, so we would need a motion to establish us as lead agency for this application. And we don't need coordinated review.
Well, that will be.
Oh, that's it, okay. Okay, may I have such a motion, please?
So the motion's to make us
The lead agency in the coordinated review.
Right, coordinated review, okay.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stephens, all in favor?
Aye.
So Rogan just need to notify the ZBA of that.
Okay, I just have a question.
Yes.
The lead agency is for ZBA 14-10. Because last meeting, you did this, right?
Last meeting, we did the coordinator review for the, for the site plan review.
What is ZBA 14-10?
That's the, that's the variance application. So Rogan is reminding me that we did this
In my document, it says...
Last week, last meeting.
51 Main Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have Mr. Stephens' note.
It's in the mess.
The planning board circulate for me.
Yeah, it's there.
Yes.
Oh, it's done? Sorry.
So then the next ZBA meeting next week, it can be formally discussed?
Yes. Okay, so we did it already.
So we're done with it, right? Now we can replace it.
My mistake.
Well, then, then is that what to do it twice, right?
Yes.
Don't forget.
Okay.
Everybody's on base.
Okay, so we're done, are we not?
I have a question regarding the seeker.
Yes.
Shall we go over that again, just together and we do that, or how do you do that as part of it?
Yeah, the EAF, yeah.
Yeah, because that was, remember there were some, you said we were backwards and...
We could do that at the next meeting if you don't mind.
Okay, that's, that'd be great. As long as it doesn't slow then down, the ZBA down.
It shouldn't, because they're going to defer to lead agency here.
Yeah, that is good.
So they don't have to look at it, so were there mistakes you wanted to change in it, or...
There were comments that you made, that there were some answers that were opposite, and some things were...
It would help if you make those corrections.
Absolutely.
Then when we meet next time...
Bring it to the, I'll send it ahead.
Yeah.
Great. Do we have time for one more quick question, kind of all, any of these subjects?
Go ahead.
Last year, we had kind of a rash of two-family applications on lots. I thought that at that time, we had at least initiated discussion that said there would be no new constructions on lots that didn't come from site plan review. Single and or two-family. How come there's a new two-family house going up on...
That's a lot.
Mulberry.
A Mulberry? Oh, yeah, I know, just, is that what that is?
I have heard multiple times...
That may have been approved a long time ago.
It's not in the code. It's contradictory, but there's actually a specific section that still says one and two-family homes do not need planning board review.
Not in site plan?
Yes. So it seems that the discussion that was had in the past intended on doing that and didn't accomplish it. I have a meeting
Okay.
coming up soon with the village board to discuss that again.
It's just another one of those examples, like the electrical code problem that these gentlemen face. I mean, we were all of the opinion that if somebody was going to build on a lot, we have so few lots to be filled in, that every application would come before us.
Even for single-family?
Single or two-family.
Okay.
Because what happened in those multiple applications a year ago is that somebody just put, kept putting up two families, saying that we're not under the multiple housing code. This is someone who's got three lots in a row, that when we approved the subdivision, we approved them for two-family lots.
Right.
But did no site plan at all. All we did was subdivision.
Yeah.
And created three two-family lots.
Yeah.
So it's there as a vacant lot. There's now, of course, a house about 80% completed.
Right, so we had subdivision, but not site plan.
We never did a site plan. And that's because I think what happened is when the building inspector went to the code, he got stuck in a position when he read the code that says, doesn't have to have site plan.
Exactly, that's right.
We've tried to find it, to...
So it's never changed?
Right. I think that actually laws were changed, but they were in the wrong section of the code that didn't actually apply to this situation.
Well, this is in 2123, right? So Congress still says the same thing.
Not surprised we didn't hear from your folks on Church Street about that going on.
So this is like an Easter egg hunt.
Well, it's just that the code has these problems, that, you know, we asked, we asked the office downstairs to follow the code. And then they go to the book and they start to follow the code, only to find out that it's out of date by nine years on the electrical code. Or it's so convoluted as to, did we actually pass it, did we record it? Did what? No, all we thought we did. I mean, we were all of the opinion that the site plan review thing was in place.
So wait a minute, you know, I'm reading it now, Rogan, I don't see, in 2123, they used to have an exception in the first sentence. The sentence reads essentially, "No building permit shall be issued, no structure or use shall be established, no lot parcel or site preparations, including clearing vegetation, grading, et cetera, faltering drainage shall be undertaken, except in conformity with an approved site plan for the lot. And no CFO issued until requirements are all met." It used to say in that sense, except for single and two-family residences.
Right, but it also says in there where a site plan is required. And then in another section of the code, it specifically says a site plan is not required for one and two-family homes. So we are interpreting that to say, none of that can happen if a site plan is required. But in cases that a site plan is not required...
So it says somewhere else, do you know where?
I have, I have sent emails so I can find it for you. Yes.
Maybe you could find it in there.
A gentleman happens to be building two very nice two-bedroom units, two-bedroom units, you know, he's not building a five-bedroom dormitory. But it's just, didn't come for any kind of review. And these were lots when we did do the subdivision, we had concerns about drainage in the rear of the lots, if you remember.
Yeah.
So it was important to have that informed.
Yeah.
I don't know where it is, but we should talk about that.
Okay. All right, so one thing that, oh, so, did you read that?
I did, it looks great.
Okay.
Do you want it back?
Yes, please.
So George, are we going to work on getting that tightened up? But he's got two more lots to go.
Well, I'd like to find, yeah.
We have to find a lot.
I'll have to find out where that is. It's not in the site plan section.
Okay, so you all received the draft MOU
Yeah.
For, any comments about this, John?
No, I'm agreeing that, yeah.
Okay. Michael?
No, it's...
Okay. I will make this motion then. This is the, the MOU or MOA between planning board and ZBA for area variance referrals and secret lead agency. And the resolution says it's resolved and agreed by the zoning board and planning board that with respect to any appeal or application for an area variance for a single-family or two-family residence, which does not involve a planning board application for site plan approval, special permit approval, or subdivision approval, the planning board defers to the zoning board of appeals judgment on the appeal or application, and no referral pursuant to Village Code Section 21259A4 shall be made to the planning board. But with respect to all other appeals and applications to the zoning board of appeals, such referral shall be made. And two, whenever the planning board declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of a type one or unlisted action in which the zoning board of appeals is an involved agency, the zoning board of appeals by this resolution and agreement shall be deemed to have consented to the planning board serving as lead agency, negating the need for the planning board to wait for, or the zoning, the zoning board of appeals to send a response to the circulation. May I have a second to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So I will sign this. I don't have the data, George.
No.
Yes. And you can get it. Okay, that's that. And then the thing that Mr. Stephens alluded to with some outdated code sections, we had a problem where the building inspector found a section in the code that referred to an expired or non-existent New York State Uniform Code for fire, what's it called?
Fire Limits District.
Yeah, for Fire Limits District. And so we have, George has drafted the following recommendation for us to approve to send to the village board. And it's, the history of it is that we, a site plan application for 51 Main Street is pending before planning board for a proposed improvement that lies within the fire limits district established by Chapter 86 of the Village Code. And whereas according to Village Building Inspector Travis, Chapter 86 of the Village Code references portions of the State Uniform Code, which were applicable between 1984 and 2003, but are no longer applicable. And whereas Building Inspector Travis further advises that since Chapter 86 still existed, the applicant must follow the cumbersome procedure for a variance from the outdated standards set forth therein, and whereas it's the understanding of planning board that the present State Uniform Code effectively supersedes the requirement of the outdated Village Code references in Chapter 86. Therefore, it's hereby resolved that the secretary forward this resolution to the village board requesting that the village board undertake a review of Chapter 86 as soon as practical to eliminate any unnecessary duplication of or outdated reference to the state building code, and be it further resolved that the village board is requested to cooperate with building inspector in expediting the Chapter 86 variance procedure so that the processing of the pending site plan application may proceed to completion. May I have a second to this, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stephens. Any further discussion about this? You've seen this, right?
That sounds great.
Okay. Any, any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And Ms. Harsho is absent? Okay, so you got that, right? Would you like to send it right down?
I'm on it.
Okay, you're good. Okay, so we don't know how long this will take. But we've done our part, and the village board may, I mean, I think they have to have a public hearing and two readings and...
But the variance could be very quick.
Yeah.
They have to get everybody together in that committee, especially if they can't do it.
And that's not something we really go to, which would represent that, correct?
You, you...
I mean, the, the village board.
The advisory council?
Yeah.
I think you have to go, but I don't know.
Okay.
You know, someone, we don't know yet.
Okay.
The village board has to hold that, has to, well, you... The Village Board has to hold that, has to, well, you've seen the arcane procedure that has to be followed, so.
Okay.
They have to do it, they have to establish a board and they have to hold meetings, yeah.
Unless they decide to change the legislation.
Right, which will, which will take a while, because it has to be drafted, it has to have two readings and-
They'll need to go through the-
The advisory, yeah.
Okay. Do we need any notes for this application?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Great, thank you so much, I really, we appreciate your work. But I miss the village.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
It's a nice project.
Yeah, I think it is. That's a lot of work.
Okay. What else was there that, we don't need to do anything with this, so.
Okay.
You're done.
Thank you, thank you so much.
We do have draft minutes that were submitted at the end of the session.
Not doing it right, no?
Well, we're not doing anything with it, but we have to determine escrow, escrow.
I just saw this tonight, I would-
Yeah, we just got it, we're not doing anything with it, it'll be on the next agenda. Okay. Okay. All right, George, we're done, unless you have any comments about the minutes.
I will go.
Okay. May I request our attention, come back to the agenda and the minutes? Okay. Another one, what you want?
I actually do.
Okay. So we have draft minutes for the May 20, 2014 meeting. May I have a motion to approve the draft minutes? May I have any discussion, any questions? I'm sorry, second, Mr. Stephens? Any further notes or discussions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I think we're done, right?
We're done.
May I have a motion to disperse, I mean-
To adjourn?
Adjourn?
So moved.
Second to Mr. Stephens' motion.
I can't, I can't do that.
What's that?
All in favor? Is there any discussion about adjournment? Is there, you have any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I just hate to go, that's all.
You know, I'm with you.